The special session of the Williamson County Commission to order. We will have our invocation by Commissioner Paul Webb and our pledge of the flag by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would everyone please bow your heads? Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, Lord of all, we bow our heads and thanks for all the blessings we have received. We thank you for all of our fellow men and women serving our community and our country in this most unusual time. Please help this body of elected officials, serve our citizens faithfully, and to promote the general welfare of everyone in our county. Eternal God, please lay your hands on the shoulders of those working to find a vaccine or cure for this horrible disease that is affecting all we do. We look to you, Lord, as our rock of hope in these troubling times. Please help us follow your will as you've told us through the scriptures. Dear Lord, let us all work together to serve you and work for the welfare of all your people as we stand in wonder in all of you who sent your son to suffer for all of us. Please hear our prayer, dear Lord. Amen.
Commissioner Jones?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
At this point in time in communications and messages, I will call on Commissioner Hudson.
As Chairman, I move to suspend the rules relating to the electing of the chair and the chair pro temp of the commission and for the appointment of committees and of the commission.
Are there any objections to this motion? Are there any objections?
Mr. Chairman, you need a second, please.
Second. For Dwight Jones.
For suspension of the rules, we need a second. Okay.
Commission shall find second.
So we've got, well, we've got our second. Are there any objections to the suspension of the rules? All right, hearing none, we will proceed then. Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner, I move that we move the chairman and chairman pro temp to the first of the agenda.
Are there any objections to the moving of the, those items up on the agenda?
I second that.
Are there any objections? All right, if not, I will turn the floor over to, to Jeff.
Point of order, Chairman Little.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we get a roll call for the minutes, please?
I forgot that. I'm sorry. Jeff, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Aloe?
Aloe present.
Commissioner Osbrooks?
Commissioner Osbrooks, present.
Commissioner Bill?
Bill present.
Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Chalfont?
Commissioner Chalfont, present.
Commissioner Herbert?
Herbert present.
Commissioner Hester? I see you, Ms. Hester. Commissioner Hudson?
Commissioner Hudson, present.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Commissioner Dwight Jones, present.
Commissioner Ricky Jones? I see you, Mr. Jones. Commissioner Landrum?
Landrum present.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Commissioner Lawrence, present.
Commissioner Little?
Little present.
Commissioner Lothers?
Lothers present.
Commissioner Mason?
Commissioner Mason, present.
Commissioner Morton?
Morton present.
Commissioner Nations?
Nations present.
Commissioner Rainey?
Rainey present.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Story?
Story present.
Commissioner Sturgeon? Commissioner Sturgeon? Commissioner Tonacliff?
Tonacliff present.
Commissioner Webb?
Commissioner Webb, present.
Commissioner Williams?
Commissioner Williams, present.
All right. So I have 21 present, three absent, with Commissioner Beathard, Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Sturgeon is absent.
I have heard from Commissioner Beathard, I think he said he was out of town, but that's the only one I have heard from. So we have a quorum and we will proceed. Jeff, I will now turn the meeting over to you for the election of a chairman.
Okay. The floor is now open for nominations for a one-year term for chairperson of the Williamson County Commission. Are there nominations?
This is Commissioner Herbert. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Tommy Little.
Is there a second?
Dana Osbrook, second.
Okay. Is there a motion to cease nominations?
Motion nomination cease. Landrum.
Williams, second.
All those in favor of nominations ceasing, cast your vote by saying aye. Those opposed, no.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then all those in favor of Commissioner Little for chairperson of the county commission, vote by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. Chairman Little has been elected chairperson of the Williamson County Commission for a one-year term. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate your vote. Appreciate your confidence. At this time, we will open up the floor for nominations for chairman pro temp.
I nominate Steve Smith. This is Commissioner Osbrooks.
Landrum, second.
We have a nomination and a second. Is there any other nominations? Or a move to nomination cease?
Commissioner Webb moved for nominations to cease for vice chair.
Commissioner Ricky Jones, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the nomination ceasing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nominations are closed. All in favor of electing Steve Smith as chairman pro temp, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Chairman Little, would you all let the notice that Commissioner Steve Smith had joined the meeting at the time of the election?
And I have not read the open, the notice for electric meeting either. Do I need, I need to get that into the record?
Correct.
This, this meeting is being held pursuant to Executive Order 51 issued by the governor of the state of Tennessee. It is being held electronically due to the need to protect health, safety, and well-being of the citizenry, and without objection will be conducted in this manner. As such, all members of the committee must be able to hear the chairman and each other. If you cannot hear other members, please notify the chairman immediately. All votes will be done by roll call, and when you speak to a matter, please identify yourself. This meeting is available to the public on public access TV and is streaming live on YouTube.
This is Commissioner Smith. Now that that's done, thank you all very much for your confidence, and I appreciate it. I'm sorry I was late signing into the meeting.
We now show 22 members present, and at this time, we will move with the election of the committees. Our council has said that these can be done by acclamation. So as we go through it, we will take each committee one at a time. We are basically going to repeat the same committees as last year. We will entertain a motion for the committee. When you make your motion, make it by acclamation, and then we will have the, the vote, and this should proceed fairly quickly. First up is the budget committee. These are elected by the mayor, selected by the mayor. Budget committee would be Commissioner Paul Webb chairman, Commissioner Judy Herbert, Commissioner Chaz Morton, Commissioner Barb Sturgeon, and Roger Anderson, mayor. We'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Osbrooks, move that we, by acclamation, approve this budget committee.
Smith, second.
Commissioner, Commissioner Osbrooks, the motion. Commissioner Smith, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next, we have the purchasing and insurance committee. David Landrum, chairman, Jennifer Mason, vice chair, Commissioner Betsy Hester, Commissioner Chad Story, and then Mayor Roger Anderson will entertain a motion.
Mr. Smith, move for approval.
Commissioner Mason, second.
Commissioner Smith, would you make that as an acclamation?
I make a motion for I make a motion for approval of the committee by acclamation.
Commission shall find a second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Chalfont, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Committee passes. Next, we have our statutory committees. Will be the investment committee, meet as needed. Commissioner Dwight Jones, Commissioner Beth Lothers, Commissioner Jerry Rainey, Karen Paris trustee, and Roger Anderson, mayor, will entertain a motion.
Commission shall find so move.
Mr. Lawrence, second.
By acclamation, please.
By acclamation.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Ricky Lawrence, second.
Commissioner Jones, the second. Ricky Jones, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes. Next, we have the audit committee. Commissioners Dwight Jones and Commissioner Greg Lawrence will entertain a motion. This can be done by acclamation.
Commissioner Mason, motion by acclamation to approve the committee.
Commissioner Mason's a motion. Is there a second?
Lothers, second.
Commissioner Lothers, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Audit committee is approved. Next, we have standing committee. The law enforcement and public safety. Commissioner Sean Aiello, chair, Jennifer Mason, vice chair, Robbie Beal, Dwight Jones, Beth Lothers, Steve Smith, and Matt Williams. Will entertain a motion by acclamation.
Moved to accept by acclamation for the law enforcement committee.
Commissioner Mason, second.
Okay, and that was
Commissioner Landrum, I'm sorry.
Mr. Landrum, the motion. Commissioner Mason's the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Law, law enforcement committee is approved. Property committee, Commissioner Chad Story, chair, Commissioner Jerry Rainey, vice chair, Commissioner Bert Chalfont, Mistress Betsy Hester, Ricky Jones, Jennifer Mason, and Steve Smith. Will entertain a motion by acclamation.
Commissioner Hudson, approve. Commissioner Hudson, motion to approve by acclamation.
Yeah. Commissioner Hudson, the motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Webb, the second.
Commissioner Webb, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Property committee is approved. Education committee. Commissioners Tom Tonacliff, chair, Commissioner Brian Beathard, vice chair, Commissioners Robbie Beal, Betsy Hester, Keith Hudson, Chad Story, and Matt Williams. Entertain a motion by acclamation.
I make the motion to approve these backlamation. Commissioner Rainey.
Commissioner Webb, the second.
Mr. Rainey, the motion. Commissioner Webb, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Education committee is approved. Tax study committee. Commissioner David Landrum, chair, Commissioner Tom Tonacliff, vice chair, Commissioner Sean Aiello, Dana Osbrook, Ricky Jones, Greg Lawrence, Aaron Nations will entertain a motion by acclamation.
Mr. Smith, move approval by acclamation.
Commissioner Osbrook, second.
I have Commissioner Tonacliff, the second. Commissioner Smith, the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Tax study committee is approved. Public health committee, Commissioner Jerry Rainey, chair, Commissioner Bert Chalfont, vice chair, Commissioners Dana Osbrook, Ryan Beathard, Keith Hudson, Greg Lawrence, Aaron Nation will entertain a motion by acclamation.
Make a motion by acclamation. This is Commissioner Chalfont.
All right, excuse me. I just saw the note from Diane. Let's make that by unanimous consent. I am stating it wrong the whole time. Said just now saw the note. So can you restate that motion, please? Whoever made the motion just didn't restate it by, by unanimous consent.
Motion back unanimous consent. It's Commissioner Chalfont.
Commissioner Webb, the second.
Thank you. Commissioner Chalfont, the motion. Commissioner Webb, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion, commission. The public health committee is approved. Council Mosley, do we need to redo anything since we did it by acclamation, not unanimous consent?
They, they're effectively the same thing, so we'll just have the minutes reflect unanimous consent, unless there's any objection from the commissioners. If they want to go back and re-vote them, we can do that.
Are there any objections? I see a lot of nose, head shaking, no. All right. Next, we have the rotating committees. Steering committee. Keith Hudson, Commissioner Keith Hudson, chair, Commissioner Dwight Jones, vice chair, Commissioners Dana Osbrook, Bert Chalfont, Tommy Little, and Chaz Morton will entertain a motion by unanimous consent.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Webb, motion by unanimous consent.
Go ahead, Paul. I second, then. David Land.
Commissioner Webb, the motion. Commissioner Rainey, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Steering committee is approved. Rules committee, Commissioner Judy Herbert, chair, Commissioner Jennifer Mason, vice chair, Commissioners Brian Beathard, Aaron Nation, Jerry Rainey, and Matt Williams will entertain a motion by unanimous consent.
Move for unanimous consent. Lothers?
Mason, second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Is that Mason?
I think it was Lothers.
All right, Commissioner Lothers, the motion. Commissioner Mason, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rules committee is approved. Human resources committee, Commissioner Ricky Jones, chair, Commissioner Barb Sturgeon, vice chair, Commissioners Robbie Beal, Beth Lothers, Steve Smith, Barb Sturgeon, entertain a motion by unanimous consent.
Move for approval by unanimous consent. Commissioner Osbrooks.
Commissioner Webb, the second.
Commissioner Osbrooks, the motion. Commissioner Webb, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Human resources committee is approved. Parks and recreation committee, Commissioner Betsy Hester, chair, Commissioner Paul Webb, vice chair, Commissioner Sean Aiello, David Landrum, Greg Lawrence, and Tom Tonacliff. Entertain a motion by unanimous consent.
I make the motion.
Commissioner Smith, move for approval by unanimous consent.
Commissioner Smith, the motion. Is there a second?
Rainey seconds it.
Commissioner Rainey, the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the Parks and Recreation Committee is approved. Being this is a special called meeting, we can only go with items that are on the agenda, but I didn't give the mayor a chance to speak under communications and messages. Does the mayor have anything that he needs to communicate with us?
Congratulations again, Tommy. I know this has been a difficult period for you, but you've handled the electronic meetings very good. There are two things that I would like Jeff Mosley to touch on before you get gone. One, what's the special session by the legislators? And the immunity. So you feel good about that. And two, the executive order for electronic meetings. If Jeff would touch on those, I think that's everything that I would like to discuss here tonight. Jeff?
Sure, Mayor. The, the special session was held over three days. The legislature passed the amendment to the Governmental Tort Liability Act, which protects governmental entities and their employees from actions resulting from COVID-19, unless there is gross negligence on the part of the entity, or unless the employee acts intentionally, maliciously, or for personal profit. So we think we've got very good protection out of it. The governor signed it last week. So it is in place for any claims that are filed or made after August 3rd. We have that additional protection, so that's good. We've been pushing that issue, and, and the mayor actually initiated that on behalf of the counties several months ago. So we're happy to see that come to completion. The second item was the, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting which one you're saying now. Oh, the electronic meetings. The governor has extended by executive order the ability to act electronically through the end of September. So we do have that ability, and we hope to continue to see decreases in both the hospitalizations and the active cases in Williamson County. So hopefully it won't be necessary to extend it further, but we do have the ability to meet electronically through the month of September, so we're also happy for that flexibility. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anything else, Mayor?
No, Tommy. Thank you very much. Look forward to doing our September meeting on electronic basis. So put that on your calendar. We'll be doing that, and all the committee meetings, along with the other activities that we'll have going between now along with the other activities we'll have going between now and the end of September. As you probably noted, most of the executive orders that come out are only a day or two before the expiration date. So many of you are wondering or sitting there about how about the mandate on the mask. There has been no communication at all from the governor's office at all, and if anything comes down, I will let you know just as soon as we get it.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank all the commissioners for attending our special meeting tonight. Thank you for your vote of confidence for chairman, and thank you for helping us get through these times and agreeing to serve on the same committees. It'll make things a little bit easier. And if less there is, somebody else has something else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Commissioner Webb?
Commissioner Rainey.
Hearing no objections, we are adjourned.
Thank you.